9:07, Dr. Rubio?
Yes. Good evening. Tonight, we have an ECC update from Mr. Baker regarding the work we are doing and what he's currently continuing to wrap up for us here at the facility. Mr. Baker, thank you for being here.
It's a pleasure to be in front of the newly elected board. For those of you who don't know, our team has been out here for about two and a half years from when ECCL construction started, and we're just about done. So this is going to be a brief update on what work is remaining. Just first, I'll refer to buildings A, B, C, D, E. I know that you don't all think about that. This is a diagram that shows A is the community building. I'll clean that up. Building A is the community building at the corner of 53rd. B is the city and district administration building along with the wellness center and student-based health center. Building D is the high school. Building C is Annie Yates', and Building E is the gym. So we refer to these buildings by their letters. First off, final change order negotiation. We've been working hard on this, as Dr. Rubio alluded to. We have only four items remaining of the about, I think about, 300 or so items. So that's great news. So we have some things yet to negotiate, and we'll bring those final items to the board, I believe, either in early February or early March, since there's no meeting in late February. But that's -- so we're almost done. In terms of punch list, there were some variety of punch lists. There was the architects' punch list, DSK, that was completed in late October. Public Works, City of Emeryville, issued some items in late October. We completed those in early December. And Board President Marion submitted items at the end of October, and those were completed also in early December. Therefore, the warranty period, the two-year warranty period commenced on December 5th. What this means for two years, any item that's not functional or complete, such as some of the gate items that a member, Marion, mentioned, must be repaired by Turner. And those are submitted. There's also a warranty bond in the value of $30 million, which the district holds, for any items if Turner would, for some reason, not be able to perform those items. The district could call upon that bond. We don't anticipate needing to use that, but that's part of the contract, the contractual requirements. And so that bond will be in place for the remainder of the warranty period. The way that we're doing this in terms of coordination with the city and the district is Brad Helfenberger, who is with the City of Emeryville, is going to be our point person. He's got a bit of a construction background, so it makes sense for him to do that. And so he's been communicating with Turner pretty much on a daily basis about these items. And so I checked with him just this evening before the meeting, and he said they've been quite responsive. So I think that process is going well so far. The last remaining work we have to do is the wall hall. Just a little bit of a background here. Again, the wall hall has been something that had been taken out of the project about two and a half years ago, and then in March of last year, the board approved to add it back in. Between April and June of last year, the design process took place, and we had to submit to the Division of State Architecture for approval. At the end of June, the purchase order was submitted. We were told by Recreation Republic, who's the vendor, that there was a six-month lead time. Mid-December, they said it would ship the first week in January. At the end of December, it was moved to a later departing ship out of the Netherlands. But we've confirmed that the ETA at the Port of Los Angeles is February 14th. And then it will be trucked up here to the site of the awarded installer, who's located in Richmond, I believe, and they will then be able to install that. So one thing we need to do is schedule when this is going to be installed. It takes about four days to install, and we're working with that installer and the district to determine the schedule for that. And that's really all that remains for ECCL at this time.
The wall hall is a play structure.
We had given a presentation of that last spring. There is an area of, you'll see that gray kind of gravel decomposed ground out there. That's where it goes. And it's really meant for the, it's primarily for the elementary-age kids. There's the play structure out by the entry. Annie Yates' is for the younger kids. This is for the, really, the kind of elementary through middle-school age kids. I forget the exact ages. I think it's something like third through eighth grade or something like that. But that will be installed in probably February, March, depending. We want to work around the district's schedule.
This is just an update, right?
It's just an update. So public comment if you want, or?
Public comment on this item?
Go ahead. You have to come to the mic, sorry.
Okay, so the warranty period on this project, the warranty period on this project commenced in 2015? I'm confused. Can you just explain that?
The warranty, the warranty period commenced on December 5th, 2016, just about a month, six weeks ago.
Because it says 15.
Oh, it does, Mr. Baker. At the top, your first bullet. Go back.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's an error. It is 16. I'm very sorry. That's a typo. I'm very sorry. No, that's 12, 5, 16. And go, so it will expire in 2018, at the end of 2018. Thank you for clarifying that. I didn't notice that. I apologize for that typo.
Any other questions?
I'll be happy to volunteer to do that.
I think Ms. Miles might have some napkins, Mr. Baker. Ms. Miles, were you able to get some napkins for Mr. Baker? That wasn't for him. What, did you get some, I thought you had some napkins.
Okay.
She's got you covered. She just forgot that. Yeah. Sorry about that. Thank you, Ms. Miles. And by the way, just while we're taking this moment, I just wanted to thank Ms. Miles because in our efforts yearly to recruit new students, Ms. Miles always goes over to the preschool at the YMCA and speaks to the parents of potential students for the Transition OK program and kindergarten. So, Ms. Miles, I forgot to say that in my report, and I saw you come in. I just want to say thank you, by the way.
Next item is item 7.2, and Mr. Baker, it's site utility resequencing, and it's a Turner change order request.
This topic is one that has, this was one of the, this was probably the largest issue on the project that we started, that started emerging at the beginning of 2015. The original construction scope, the way the building was, the ECCL was designed, is that all the site utilities, the underground utilities, would go in before building construction. And most of that stuff all runs through the community commons. That's the way that it's designed. It comes from the buildings and goes through, and then the lines go out to San Pablo Avenue through the gap between buildings A and B. A couple of things happened. When construction started in late 2014, the sewer lines in San Pablo Avenue were not at the same location as showed on the site survey. They're actually, they're higher than what had shown. And so we had to redesign, one thing they did was we had to redesign all the sewer lines that come out of these four buildings here so that they could hit the right elevation. And that was actually a tricky thing to do, but the engineers were able to do that. The bigger issue is in February 2015, a 24-inch abandoned East Bay Mud water pipe was discovered on San Pablo Avenue that did not occur in any of the site surveys. And this was all the way along the edge of San Pablo, right up against the curb. Our friends at East Bay Mud, who are challenging to work with, took us, actually, it was our folks had to go to the county to figure out who owned this pipe because no one claimed it. And we actually found a document from the 1920s that showed that there was an East Bay Mud pipe. We then, the East Bay Mud process began. Although the pipe was identified in February 2015, East Bay Mud did not allow us to cut that pipe until August of 2015. And we had to go, had to cut sections of the pipe out to make every utility connection along San Pablo. It was, it was very challenging. We enlisted the considerable skills of Cindy Montero, the Assistant City Manager, as well as Sabrina Landreth, who's now the City of Oakland State Administrator, to try and see if we could get some early action out of East Bay Mud, but we were not able to. So what do we do? So what this meant is that we couldn't do the connections in the way that you do, especially sewer connections, you have to start in the street and go back. So to kind of work around this, Turner and the subcontractors changed the schedule pretty drastically to build the buildings first and then put the site utilities in second. And so that was a big resequencing that was, that really, you know, had the risk of impacting a lot of things. The biggest challenge we had is because of that, the only way that we could enter into this site, into the community commons, was between Buildings C, the one we're in, and the high school. And the reason for that is Caltrans did not allow us to have any construction access off San Pablo Avenue because that's a state highway. So the only way we could get in here to do this work was in between those two buildings. We also had to go back in and, we had to redesign it, resequence it. We had to go back to approval and repermitting by the Cities of Emeryville, Oakland, and Caltrans, which was not, not the easiest task. And the result is the only schedule impact we really had, which wasn't as unsubstantial, is that Building D, the high school, completed in July instead of January. And that's because we couldn't build the stair, elevators, deck structure between the buildings because we had a big equipment coming in here to put site utilities in. This issue, I reported on this in monthly board updates for 14 months in a row, starting in January 2015. And if you go back and look at those board reports, you'll see that this item was probably the high, one of the biggest issues we talked about because it had a significant impact on the project. And so that was, I reported on that up until when we did the work actually, and started doing the work again in the early spring last year. Also, in the ECCL budget, since April 2015, we had budgeted $400,000 for this because we knew that it was a lot more time and more inefficiency for subcontractors to put those in. And it was like $393,000 is the estimate that Turner had provided. We verified that and had $400,000 plugged in. So we've always been planning on there being a cost for this work. Again, what you'll see here is in the community commons where that orange line is, which is right here, everything goes through there and then comes out where the yellow line is between A and B. But the only way to access it was where the purple arrow is off of 47th Street. So change order request 383, which is the one, which is this item, is for subcontractor utility resequencing. Turner did not charge us anything for this change, which really says a lot because they did a lot of replanning for this. They were able to absorb that within their contract, which is great. However, there are a number of subcontractors, the electrical, plumbing, trenching, mechanical, grading, and the low voltage. The low voltage is data telecom. Subcontractors all had to basically pull off the job, come back. Instead of being able to kind of do it really quickly, they had to stretch their installation from, instead of a two-month operation, to six months. So most of this is the inefficiency of having it come and do things in a different way. Again, it didn't lengthen the project schedule, but their, the duration of their operation took longer. When Turner finally submitted the cost for this, which was in December, actually, late November of last year, just about two months ago, that cost was $560,714. We've been working, we've met with about, with all these subcontractors, had about four meetings here on site with Turner and the subs, using our estimators who reviewed all the detail, all of the detail from them, and we questioned a lot of it, we're able to negotiate this down to $408,496, where it currently stands. We have one more subcontractor, mechanical, that we think there's about another $10,000 that we can negotiate away. Everyone else, we've closed out the negotiation with. So the action tonight is to approve this for not to exceed amount of $408,496. Our further action, which we'll be taking next week, is to see, work, meet with a mechanical subcontractor, which is the last one. There was one item we wanted to try and get and negotiate that down. So it'll come in somewhere less than $408,496.
And overall, I just will add, if you don't mind, that the difficult, well, we'll see how we end up. Mr. Baker's doing a great job, but if we are not within our budget, as you may recall, we have put money back into this project on at least three occasions, exceeding over $2 million, maybe, actually, I take it back, exceeding $6 million. So this is going to be an important conversation that we need to have with the city because we have a great partnership with the city. But I'm concerned because as a school district, we continue to put money into this project, and we haven't had that same action by the city. So if we're short or we do not have sufficient funds to cover this, depending on how your negotiations go, and I certainly hope you can keep them going well, we're going to have to have that conversation.
But I want to point out that this item and all the items tonight are within the budget. We're below, we're still quite a bit below project funding. We still have contingency remaining of, right now as it stands, about $500,000 contingency remaining right now. We still have some more change orders to negotiate. There's some other FFNE issues, and I'll be meeting with the city and also Dr. Rubio in the next week or so to talk to Costco's items. But all the items that we've talked about tonight, including this one, have been included in the project budget for some time. I want, that's an important thing for the board to understand.
And I'm sorry, I guess I have the numbers on my mind. You're right.
Yes.
Any questions? Any public comment?
I'm going to go back to the issue of the warranty. So in other words, the warranty for this entire project, right, commenced in February of 2016?
December.
December.
December 5th.
Okay. So, because I was going to say, a whole year is already, okay, okay. And then you mentioned the $6 million. Are you $6 million over budget right now?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm just making a point that, because of the, a couple of things happened from the beginning of the project where we knew going into this, you know, the economy was turning around in 2014, that summer. Housing prices, of course, were doing what they do, and so were construction costs. So as we came into this project, we knew we were going to have some budget difficulties. So we sat down immediately with the city in Swinburne, and we tried to, I guess they called it a value engineer, we tried to reduce costs where we could, make some changes where we could that were minor but maybe potentially beneficial fiscally to us. So we've had kind of this ongoing budget issue, and then there were different aspects of the project. The city really had a strong desire to have the swimming pool be a certain design that ended up going a little above $2 million. So my only point was that we have, as a school district, put money, additional money into this project to sustain it and make sure it was done right, which I'm proud of. But it's just, as Mr. Baker finishes these items and continues in his negotiations, there are some subcontractors at the end of the project who were making some demands that he's working on. And if we are short, we don't know yet. If we are short, at that time, I'm just pointing out, reminding the board and the public that we have to have this challenging conversation and really ask the city politely, you know, to also lend some support into this because we have put money into this project on three occasions at least, going beyond $6 million, and the city hasn't put in an addition, almost an additional dime that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Public comment? Board? Anyone? Questions?
Dr., Mr. Baker, I do have a quick question for you. Just kind of, you know, going back to the beginning of this project, even before you or I were even involved in Dr. Rubio as well, I think, how the contract was set up as far as, the project was originally done, supposed to be done as one building, basically, starting in sequence, and that's how the documents and everything else supported that. But at a late in the, in the process, right before it went to bid, it was changed to have a portion of the campus open at an earlier time. Is that my, is it your assumption?
It's a good question. That predates our involvement. But I do know that it was, it was set to be done in one phase, also built from the 53rd Street side this way. And so it was designed that way. And then, I'm not sure what the logic was, they just wanted to decide to phase it. For example, we opened the gym early, and then the high school would come online and then the rest of the project. And it wasn't designed to be built in multiple phases. It was designed to be in one phase, so there was some changes that were made in terms of the sequencing. And in fact, our site utility thing was a challenge because it was designed as one, if you, if you really wanted to do a building early, you would have had a standalone system for that building instead of a campus-wide system. The campus-wide system, which has been designed, is great because it actually has some efficiencies built in. But if you were going to build, bring buildings online, gym first, high school, et cetera, you would have had independent utilities for those buildings, which we did not have. And so you had to kind of bring, do everything all at once. That was one of the challenges with this resequencing, is it's a combined system for all the buildings instead of one system of connections for each building. That would have been easier, it would have been easier to solve this challenge had they each had their own connections.
With that being said, we paid a premium as far as the delivery method, as far as the lease-leaseback method. That's basically where the contractor is a developer and they lease it back to the district, and we pay them for the improvements. It's kind of a nutshell what that is. But with that in mind, we paid a premium for Turner's expertise, and it seems like they just didn't push us over the line, our finish line, when it came to really executing, figuring it out beforehand. And even though we had the problem with the water line or the abandoned water line along San Pablo, it's just that I don't think they brought enough game to the table when it came to really coming up with an honest solution, where this ended up being a project that, all told, was completed as one building. So to go through this exercise, it's saying, we tried to keep bringing online, the high school online earlier. I can't see Turner or the contractor and the subcontractors stating that this was a success based on the original contract.
Regarding this issue?
Well, regarding pretty much the whole issue as far as the resequencing and as how Turner acted in the process. When you had, they, we were, they basically chosen, it wasn't a low-bid condition where it was a typical public contract. It was cho, this group was chosen for their expertise, and because they stated that they could do what was presented to them, and to have this issue come up and not address it in a totality, a total form or a total approach. So all I'm saying is that Turner didn't really perform to the letter of the contract.
I think, I would respectfully disagree with that. They did perform to the letter of the contract because the contract is always what we view all this stuff in the context of. I think that I, the whole history of how it was supposed to be sequenced before and how we did it, I don't really know how that, how that, those decisions changed things because we arrived on the scene right when construction started. So that's kind of a good question. We could look into that. I will say this, though. I think if the, in the totality things, I mean, Turner did, you know, Turner did, I think they, the team did a very good job of managing the work. They did not charge us, we have not one dime in change order for any additional time or additional work from Turner for time, which I think is pretty admirable. They absorbed that all within the lease-leaseback contract, which is one advantage of the lease-leaseback contract that requires that. But, and they've been, I think they have been, in the grand scheme of things, pretty collaborative. I think we had some, some design issues. I think the design issues were a greater challenge on ECCL than the construction issues, frankly. But I think in terms of what you're talking about with this issue, I'd, I would, I would need to look at what the, understand really what the, whether decisions were made to change things and how, at what point that took place.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That was, that was an information item, right?
No, this is an action item.
Any other questions? Public comment?
With that being said, do we have a motion?
Ms. Timery? Roll call, please.
Member Solas?
Yes.
Member Baal?
Yes.
Member Inch?
No.
President Marion?
No.
I'm sorry. Member Inch?
No.
President Marion?
No.
No. Member Vargas?
No.
Member Langer?
Yes.
I just, I just need some clarification. I just want to be careful on this one because if the board doesn't approve this, this causes a massive financial problem for the project. So I just want to be careful on this. These things were already in the, I missed some of the conversations, so I had to step out. But if you don't approve this, we can't, I don't believe we can, we can make payment to Turner.
You can do it.
I don't think we can make payment to Turner Construction. You're, you're being asked to approve, if I'm correct, an amount not to exceed $408,000 for to redesign or resequence any sites of utilities that Swinburne has just finished negotiating with Turner, where they asked for quite a bit more money. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, and also, I mean, within the, I want to point out that within the contract documents, between Turner's contract documents, this is a legitimate change order. So it's, I understand the points you raised, but within the context of their lease-leaseback agreement, believe me, if it was, if there was a contractual reason to deny this, and we, you know, we've denied about over a million dollars of items, which don't, aren't within the contract, but this one is within the context of the agreement.
So just, one of our recommended to board that we're, we carefully consider what we're, what we're doing on this one because this is going to be a big problem for us if this is, particularly when it was already, already budgeted and accounted for. In some respects, we had set aside the money in the budget anticipating these issues.
Right, right.
Now, you may, I may agree with you, by the way. I'll just say that the original plan, a couple of years ago, for Turner to say, oh, we'll get the high school done first, don't worry. And your point about maybe that part wasn't successful as it had been promised by Turner in terms of timeline. However, I just, I have to ask the board to be very careful because we're in the middle of a contractual and legal obligation with a construction company, and this is a legitimate, these are legitimate changes.
My point is having to do with, because there was a note that said that you have additional negotiations.
Beyond this.
Correct.
These items have already been negotiated.
Correct. Yeah, that's beyond this. There's some time impacts from subcontractors that we declined, so we're still doing that. I also want to point, these are all subcontractors. They're impacted, so this is not, there's no Turner dollars in this. This is all subcontractor work from the ones listed here for having to do, having to install the work differently than was designed. I just want to make sure that people are clear on that.
So does a number of smaller companies, depending on being paid, basically.
Correct.
And this is due to the, the East Bay Mud pipe, the unforeseen condition of the East Bay Mud pipe that was discovered late in, or later in the project.
Correct. There are two issues. A minor issue was that the elevation of the lines in San Pablo were not what the utility survey, with the contract documents included. The bigger issue was that big pipe because we couldn't do any utility connections, and you work back from the street. And, and, and we were scrambling to try and get East Bay Mud out here to do something with that pipe. We tried to see if we, if the district and Turner could go at risk and cut it themselves. That caused a bit of a firestorm from East Bay Mud. It was that February through August period which really, we had to basically stop and come back later to do the site utilities because we couldn't do those connections until, until the fall of 2015. Until, yes, until, I'm sorry, August. What was that date? Yeah, August 2015. So the fall of 2015, we finally were able to come back in and do that. But we were, it really, the intent was going, that work was going to take place in early 2015. We had to stop, wait until they, until they took care of that pipe and then come back later. And that, having to, having to sequence the utilities within here while the buildings were built as opposed to coming in and doing a kind of a more fast operation, that was what the change was. That's the nature of the change.
So, Board members, you just want to separate out, if you have any feelings or opinions about whether or not the project was successful or not and what was promised in terms of timeline, you want to probably separate that from some of these contractual obligations and whether or not there's approval for payment or not.
One point is that, the, you'd mentioned, I go back to my previous point pertaining to the additional change order forthcoming. Are we going to address that the same way?
I'm sorry, can't.
Are we going to be, are we going to be addressing it the same way next meeting, next update regarding the outstanding change orders?
We're still negotiating that one. I mean, we declined it completely, so we're still working on that one right now.
Do you have an idea as far as the magnitude?
Do you have an idea as far as the magnitude of those?
It's about, it's about $500,000. $517, actually, is what was submitted, and we're in the process of doing some analysis on that. But that one is still pending. That one may not be approved.
But if it is, you'll be bringing it back to the board requesting?
And it will be done within the context of the contract documents, of course. But I just want to point out to date, in the last, since ECCL finished in November, so far we've negotiated down the Turner change orders by about $580,000. That's for the last three months, how much we've gotten things reduced by, and I anticipate that we'll have, we'll still have some more of that success in the next few weeks.
So basically, every time, and you're wrapping this up, but every time Turner or subcontractors through Turner has said, hey, this is our bill, you're a scheduler and you look at the detail and you say, okay, that's fluff, that's fluff, that's legitimate, that's fluff, and you make a determination of what's real or not, and you go back and sit down and say, no, we're not going to pay that. We're going to pay what we think is legitimate.
Correct. So I've given a presentation to the board, I think, a couple of times of what our process is. When we get a change order request, what they're called, we have our estimators do an independent estimate of that. And then we sit down, and in some cases, we agree that the cost is appropriate. Some, in most cases, we think it's lower. And we then meet with them and the subcontractors, and we negotiate this down. I mean, to date, I don't have the exact figure with me, but to date, I think that we've, that process has yielded about $1.5 million in savings from what Turner submitted. For this particular one, it's about $155,000, $152,000 less than what was originally submitted. But that's the process that you're talking about.
So were you, were you saying that some of this was due to the idea of phasing, opening buildings at different times?
This, it...
You said that it had to do with opening the gym and opening the high school first.
I think there's a couple of things. This, this issue has, does not really have anything to do with that. There, this issue, having to redo this work, resequence it, did result in the high school having to open a semester later. That was the schedule impact. So having to build this differently did impact that. Does that make sense?
Because everything was already late by that time.
I'm sorry, what?
Everything was already late.
She's saying everything was already late by that point, and I guess, I guess it's the member Inch's point, that we were running, we weren't on schedule to where we wanted to be, I think, for the high school opening and other pieces.
Just the high school. I mean, the rest of the project.
The rest of the facility was on time.
It was a bit later in the summer, but it was generally on time.
So, Member Miriam, I might ask that you request, you have a motion in a second, but I think you might want, might request a roll call one more time, if you would, please.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rubio. Do we have a roll call, please, on this?
Member Solas?
Yes.
Member Baal?
Yes.
Member Inch?
No.
President Miriam?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
Member Langer?
Yes.
Motion carries five to one. Next item?
Okay. Good evening again. Item...